All right, we're calling to order the special meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council is called to order today at 5:50 PM. Madam Clerk, please take your call.
Yes, Hassan Ahmad.
Here.
Moby Dun.
Present.
Here, present.
Nancy Breyer.
Here.
Robert Constan.
Present.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Hassan Saab.
Present.
And Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you very much. I am going to have our honorable Councilman Wenzel lead us with the loudest of voices in the flag of the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman, may he be seated.
Thank you very much.
And next up, we have agenda approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda for the special meeting of May 21st.
Second.
2024 is submitted.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, second by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up on the agenda is public hearings and comments on agenda items only. Anybody wants to discuss on agenda items only, this is the time you get to speak. Remember, this is agenda items only. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. You got two minutes.
Rachel LePointe, Dearborn Heights, Merrick Street. I just wanted to say that I think the resolution for the pay records is good. I think it is very reasonable, and you guys should not have had to reach this point. I fully support the NARCA on vending machines. With the 48-month moratorium resolution, that one, I'm not so much a fan of. I think that the issues with businesses and the ordinance enforcement, I think that would be better solved through you guys looking at how you could maybe amend ordinances, or otherwise do things that are more really within your power. This just feels like you're telling the administration kind of what to do, and like, we're not gonna have new businesses until we get this cleaned up. It just feels like very arbitrary, and it doesn't feel like you guys are necessarily looking to solve the problem so much as put a Band-Aid on it. So I think maybe looking at that a little further with a study session, or looking at other avenues to solve that problem might be a better use of our time and energy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Please, are you speaking as a special legal counsel, or are you speaking as a resident of Dearborn Heights?
I think we'll consider this to be a little special legal counsel because you and I discussed this matter.
Yep, okay.
So with respect to the items, there's the resolution. There is no violation of the preliminary injunction from the pending litigation with respect to your consideration of that.
Which one are you talking about? There's three things on here.
This would be, I believe.
The pay records. Pay records, the pay records resolution.
Again, this is simply something that you have the authority to do based on the charter. That's all you're doing. It's not being done with reference to anything specifically having to do with that litigation. You're just doing your due diligence and getting the information. So there should be no problem with that. The other one was the moratorium issue. You know, right now, my sense would be that this would be something that you probably should end up seeking an opinion from the Assistant Corp. Councills who handle zoning and planning issues. I think they were O'Reilly-Rancilio. I don't know if they still are with respect to getting.
We just paid them recently, yes.
Okay, with respect to getting an opinion and recommendations with respect to moratoriums. Moratoriums do raise issues when they go a very lengthy time in terms of due process, and I think that that would be a prudent thing for you to consider. So if anyone has any questions, otherwise I will.
I have a few questions here.
Okay.
First one is moratorium. We currently have a moratorium in place for used dealerships that they're in every six months. That's an ongoing thing. And the second thing is, is that we're so saturated with these kind of businesses in the city that it's affecting the image with respect to get an opinion. I mean, the problem is, at the end of the day, is that it falls down to our master plan.
Yeah, and Councilman, you know, I know that you've been the chair of the Planning Commission and are aware of a lot of these issues. The issue becomes, if you have a moratorium that potentially goes too long, it can end up raising due process issues in the sense that someone is able to use their property appropriately. And when we used to, you know, and I used to usually rely on Mark Roberts, who was an Assistant Corp. Counsel, who used to deal with a lot of these issues, and that's what he used to say to me, you know, moratoriums, you know, we can do it, but then we have to be careful if it's gonna go a long period of time because of the due process concerns. And 48 months seems like a decent.
Maybe we can reduce it to 24 months. It's not a problem.
12 months.
No, 24 months.
Well, this is an issue for you, obviously, but at the same time, just in its matter of prudence, while you don't end up having, Office of Corporation Counsel is vacant at this time, so it would probably be good to go to the Assistant Corp. Councills who handle this type of matter and getting some sort of advice and recommendations from them. It wouldn't be appropriate for me to necessarily address this issue unless they refuse to do something or there's some issue with regard to that. So that would just be my advice. Certainly, you can accept my advice. You can retract my advice. It's my advice, and hopefully that's helpful to you.
Thank you.
Council Chair, if I may, I disagree with his interpretation.
Please, please, I didn't even call on you. Please. Hang on, we're not here, I'm not, this is, these city council meetings, please, take a seat. Thank you.
Well, may I leave, or are you?
Yeah, you can, you can go ahead and leave.
Okay.
These meetings are not going to be courtrooms. They are not gonna be open for debates. They're not gonna be disrespecting me either by saying, "Council Chair," and just speaking without, you know, me giving you the permission. You know, you know, I hate to be able to flex and say who I am as this person, but as the council chair, there's gotta be a little bit of respect for me. You know, you don't walk into a courtroom while a judge is sitting there and you say, "Your Honor," and just talking without the honor, you know, granting you that time to say, "Go ahead and speak." And nor am I saying that I'm a judge, but I'm gonna say that this is, technically, this is my chamber right now, and I'm gonna ask you, please, don't, that goes to anybody across the board, to respect it. I don't want, I'm not, I'm not some hungry power man. That's not who I am. But it becomes disrespectful, and you become, you're an honorary man. I know, I'm sure you've never walked into a courtroom where you're saying, you know, "Your Honor," and just interrupting the judge. That doesn't happen. So I'm asking if you respect the judges in the courtrooms, please respect the council and the entire council, including the council chair and our council chambers, please. That said, I don't wanna have any more discussion on it.
You don't want me to respond?
It's over. I don't wanna, I don't wanna have any more discussion on it, but it was disrespectful. We had a conversation, you and I, we read it from the beginning, and you said, "I don't wanna disrespect you. I'm gonna let you run the meeting." Clearly, that, you know what, nothing resonated with you from that discussion. Any other public comments? Thank you. We're gonna move on to ordinance and resolution. We have 11A, Council Chair Pro-Tam Ahmad, resolution to production of city pay records.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council.
One second. Is there somebody that's not muted right now? Can we check all of your laptops? Okay, yours is muted.
I'm muted.
Okay, hello, hello.
I'm muted.
Okay, no.
Tom?
It's okay, no big deal. There's only three things on here. But before we go on to this, guys.
You yourself.
No, no, this is just.
Muted.
Wasn't me.
Okay, before we go on, guys, these next three things, have your discussion. Don't be emotional. Make a vote. This is a democracy, and move on. I don't wanna keep going back and forth. This isn't, I don't wanna spend here for the next two hours fighting over 11A. This council likes it, vote it. If you don't like it, move on. Vote no, keep it moving. We're not spending three, four hours on resolutions no more. Those are done. If you can't accommodate, keep it as it is. Make the vote on it. Yes, no, maybe so. Next up, we have, sorry, Councilman, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but you can go ahead and read the resolution.
Thank you, Council Chair. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the resolution regarding the production of city pay records and authorize the city clerk to certify the resolution as outlined in 11-8.
Second, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Wenzel. Any discussion on this?
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad, I'm gonna give you the floor.
Thank you, sir. I wanna go ahead and read the city charter, section 18.2, where it states, "All records of the city shall be public and open to inspection at all reasonable times. All books, papers, records, and accounts of any officer elected or appointed, or of any office or department of the city, shall be the property of the city and shall all times be subject to audit, examination, or inspection by any member of the council or by any person employed or designated by the council for that purpose. All such books, papers, records, files, and accounts shall be kept in such place as may be designated by the council." So basically saying that we have the right to audit all the books in the cities. I do hope that this council body, honorable body, to go ahead and go with approving this resolution so we can do our job clearly. Thank you, Council Chair.
Councilman Pro-Tam, I just got a question. If the charter is stating this, then why do we have a resolution before?
Well, basically, because I think we asked many times for this stuff to be provided to us, and so far, it has not been provided to us, Council. It's really sad for me to bring a resolution to ask for the stuff that it's our right to have, to do our job. But I guess, I guess we have to do whatever we have to do.
Is there anything in specific that you're requesting?
I'm requesting all, all the employees. There is nobody specific. It's a broad resolution that, basically, for us to do our job. We're gonna approve a budget pretty soon, so we need to see exactly what's going on.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please pay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. The aye has it. Thank you. Let's go on to the next one. Next up, we have 11B, Councilman Saab, resolution establish a 48-month moratorium.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt a resolution regarding the establishment of a 48-month moratorium and ensure assurance of new permits or licenses to car washes, gas stations, dealerships, auto repair shops, collision centers, toy yard, scrapyard, junkyard within the city of Dearborn Heights. This moratorium pertains solely to new incoming businesses. In addition, authorize the city clerk to certify this resolution as outlined in 11B.
Second, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Wenzel. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Saab.
So just for the record, we, a draft was sent over to the clerk, and this, the official updated version of this resolution is here. Section 12.2, just to put it on the record, states that all current applicants who have been approved or have gone through the process of zoning or planning, or the building department, are exempt.
What if their licenses are, or what if their permit are expired?
It's that they still went through the planning and so.
Okay, okay. So I will just say a few things. I've received several calls on this. I had many conversations with Councilman Saab. I don't believe anything he is doing here is being politicized. I think some people are out to make it to be that way. I can say that we've had a moratorium. I don't know why we don't have some type of resolution that states, you know, no more dealerships, because I know Councilman Wenzel, I believe, Councilwoman also did this as well with Councilmen Hostes.
I'd like to speak.
Not allowing participants to unmute themselves. Yeah, go ahead. Do you'd like to say a few things?
Council Chair, yeah. Approximately three years ago, we did have a moratorium in place, as Councilman Wenzel knows, for no more dealerships. Well.
Four years ago.
Um.
I was here three years.
Three. Three? Yeah, I know, I know the timeline. So, and this body, except for me and Councilman Wenzel, voted to get rid of that moratorium. So I hope that we'll be more careful in the future.
Get rid of what moratorium? No, we added, we left that moratorium.
And everybody did away with it, because I was all for renewing it, and nobody would do it, me and Councilman Wenzel. But then it was brought back.
Yeah, Councilman.
Yeah, it was brought back. You are absolutely right. There was lapse, and I don't know the timeline, but we currently have.
I just wanna get the gist of this. So, because I don't, I wasn't here then. I don't think me, Councilman Saab, Councilman Ahmad were here, or Councilwoman Breyer. But from, since we've been on here, since I've been on, all I remember is voting to renew the moratorium, so.
Every six months.
Yeah.
Expired, Council Chair.
Yeah.
I'm gonna shut up. Go ahead.
Well, no, no, I wanna hear it. Go ahead.
Well, if my memory is that expired, and then we voted not to renew it, then later, I think it did get renewed.
And I think it had to do originally with the Van Born corridor that Tom Roscoe brought forward.
Yes.
Council Chair.
Yes.
And then Council.
Thank you, Council Chair. I mean, first, I wanna salute the Councilman Saab for coming up with this resolution. There's so many things that I love about it, especially about, you know, the inspections and making sure everybody is up to date with their stuff. About the 48 months, yeah, I think, I don't wanna, I don't know if we should restrict the city that long, but to be honest with you, there's so much stuff. I don't know if I'm ready to vote on this. I would really suggest if we can take it to a study session, have the Building and Safety Department with us, have the Engineer with us, have the Planning Commission with us, maybe the Ordinance Department, because we're basically, yeah, we're telling them, like, you know, we're probably raising the fees and all the fines and stuff. I guess we need, we need to discuss it. We need to have a study session to know more about all this stuff in order for us to come up with a good vote. So I would hope, maybe if Councilman Saab can table this to us, like, a study session in the near future. And I think we couldn't have a better vote on it, especially all this stuff.
Council Chair.
Yeah.
So, Council Ahmad, just to bring yourself, the problem is with the, with the Planning Commission, when they approve things, they never come to us.
I agree.
And you don't know how many is getting approved. That's number one. Number two, the issue we have is that if you actually drive down Van Born corridor, there's cars that are piled two, three high, that these are supposed to be collision shops that are using it as dealerships, collision shops, used cars, dealers, you name it. It's not acceptable. And the only reason we're pointing this is that you, you remember over a month ago when the incident happened with the sale? Is that when the sales happened, there's, there's no enforcement, there's no ordinance or anything. With this moratorium, all we're doing is that when these businesses come in for renewal, we're gonna have stricter rules. We're gonna enforce their, clean up their lots, clean up the city. It's not fair. You don't live behind a mechanic shop or collision shop or somebody using it as a junkyard or a toy yard. It's not fair for the residents that live behind them.
Well, then the Councilman's saying that he doesn't wanna support it. I think he's saying that's headless.
But it's already, but believe it or not, it's already in place.
That's what I'm saying. If it's already in place, or there's a problem, you should already go after those people. What do we have a moratorium or not?
But we keep approving, and now you're approving people that are selling cars out of their homes.
Who is?
With license in the South End, because, and renting cars. And I've emailed the.
Are you saying that this moratorium is gonna stop people from renting out their cars?
No, 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 no. There, no, 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 no. What I'm saying is this puts a block. We have a lot of dealerships, a lot.
We already have a moratorium for dealerships. You're not allowed anymore.
Okay, but it's only six months.
So this is, so you're making it 48 months for dealerships?
But we're, we're actually enforcing stricter rules.
Yeah, but you're not doing it just on dealerships. You're doing.
I'm doing it across the board, anything automotive.
No, I, because a gas station's not automotive. A gas station's a place where you fill up gas. It's not automotive. It's a service.
So if a gas station exists in a place, and they're remodeling anything, this does not affect it.
Okay, so why are you adding car washes? I mean, I mean, not car washes, but a gas station.
So if somebody wants to come build a gas station right here where Blue Moon is, you can't.
Right here where Blue Moon is?
I'm just using Blue Moon as, as an example.
Okay.
It's not a gas station. It was never a gas station. It can be a gas station for 48 months.
I'm, well, I'm gonna tell you right now, the 48 months, you're way blowing that up. I, 12 months, 12 months is where I firmly stand on. If I were to vote yes, but if you tell me 24, 48, two years, nobody can make a decision because we got a two-year moratorium. Way too long.
But the problem is, you're actually, you're putting this with, where you're putting this, but you're making administration also work to the master plan. This overall.
We don't even have a master plan.
But that's the problem. You're putting this so the master plan works into, this issue works into the master plan.
48 months is.
But that's fine. I'm willing to work with the 48 months, but not for a year. No, I'll do 24.
24 is still too much. You're gonna say two years, nobody can do anything? I'm not gonna lie to you. I mean, look, listen, I ran on being business friendly, as you did as well. To sit there and say that no business can do anything that, if they have anything type of like this, I don't know, I disagree with you. You wanna go 12 months? Now, now, this is music to my ears, but you're gonna start telling me 24 months, 48 months? Four years, three years? That's way too long.
Council Chair, Councilwoman.
Malinowski, yeah. I'm all for doing this, but shortening the time. Maybe the first time we do this, we can do it for 12 months, and then when it comes back in a year, do it for two years. Gives it time to see how it's gonna work out for us and for the dust to settle. I am a big supporter of this. But, and if it comes back in a year and it's working, I'll support it again. I have no problem with that.
What did you say happened in the 12 months? Let me tell you what's expected now. Now you have 12 months to say, "I want, I want a master plan." In the next 12 months, I wanna say how many people actually apply it. In the next 12 months, I wanna be able to say, you know, whatever it is that you wanna see in the next 12 months. But 24, 48 months? Gosh, that's way too much.
I'm only gonna do 12 months.
I was not.
I'm sorry. I was just agreeing with you, Councilman.
Okay, okay. Well, I was gonna say, it gives us time to kinda get this under control, because right now, it's out of control. The situation is just a free-for-all. So it gives it some structure to follow, and if in 12 months, we see that that structure is working, I would go with four years at that timing.
Why? Why can't you just have a resolution? The point of the moratorium is to say, establish a resolution. We're gonna have a moratorium in place for six to 12 months because we are working on a resolution. We've had a moratorium for the last three years on our dealerships, and we have zero resolution.
The problem is with this moratorium that we're, that other moratorium doesn't have is that if we actually enforce all these, we start cleaning up the city and some of these businesses, I'm not against allowing businesses to come in, but until then, a lot of these businesses need to be cleared up.
I really still think if we can maybe set up a study session, maybe this week or early next week, just let's meet with the building department, the ordinance department, the engineering. I know we have a master plan in, in the work. Let's just get more clear clarification, because I'd really wanna vote yes on this, but I just need more information from all these departments. I need their help. So if really we can just table for one week, do a study session, get the information that we need, so we can make a, you know, good vote decision.
I'm gonna have to go to Councilman Constan first, and then Councilman Wenzel. Sorry, Council Chair, but, or Council Chair Pro-Tam, it was.
Thank you, Council Chair. I agree with you and with Councilman Ahmad. I applaud Councilman Saab's, you know, intention to get our used car lots and so on cleaned up, but I think 48 months is too long. I think the resolution, it says, no new car washes, gas stations, dealerships, auto repair shops, collision centers. So if, for example, La Fontaine, which is explaining up and down Telegraph Road, decides they wanna take over some abandoned property and expand their dealership, according to this, they, they, they can't do it. Same thing with collision centers. I don't know that we have a lot of collision shops. Car wash, like any business these days, the business is a competitive business, but I too ran on a platform of being pro-business, pro-competition. It leads to the best service and lower prices. So I think we should refer it to a study session and get some data to see how many car washes we have, how many collision centers, gas stations, auto repair facilities, and so forth. Thank you.
Council.
Chair.
Council, it's gonna go to Councilman Wenzel, Councilwoman Breyer, because they was first, and then the Councilman Saab. Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you. A couple of things. The, the problem is that this is a resolution, and we have the current administration and council have ignored the resolution, the moratorium on used car lots. Just recently, we approved a new license. I voted no on it, but it passed, and that was against the resolution, moratorium. And the thing is, a resolution doesn't hold water. You need an ordinance, change the ordinance. That's what you need to do. I mean, you can have all the resolutions you want, because we had a moratorium, and I mean, you guys voted yes for a brand-new used car lot in the South End recently. Just because the guy thought he was.
This is, this is the clerk right there, Councilman. I'm gonna have the clerk address you on that.
It was for a re, it was for a renewal. We haven't had anyone apply for a new business.
I don't want you to make that accusation to the public.
It wasn't his business. He bought a business. Yeah, I remember he bought the business. He thought he had a.
That was the one at Van Born and Beach Daily.
Yeah, yeah, and we gave him a license.
And there was a business there before, and that business owner failed to apply for a license.
The license expired, so.
The license expired, but it was originally.
It doesn't matter. The license expired. It was gone, and we issued a new license for a used car lot. Plain and simple. I mean.
But that, but you know what? I'm not gonna lie to you. I feel like even if there was a resolution or moratorium, which, a moratorium that was established, you know, the situation that the individuals put in, the due diligence across the board, I think, was, was failed on the administration, on the council, on the, on the attorneys, on the listing agent, on the buyer's agent, everybody failed at that point. And here you have this, you know, poor businessman who wants to invest in Dearborn Heights, who invested $150,000, was put in this pickle. Sometimes, you know, you're up here, Councilman, to make these tough decisions.
I know, but that's, that's where you don't, you don't bend the rules for somebody.
But this was already approved. It was already approved, the collision mechanic, whatever it is. It was already approved. Madam Clerk, I went through this with Roger.
Council Chair, my point is, is a resolution doesn't mean squat. It's gotta be an ordinance change to make this, to have this whole weight.
I, I think, I think there should have been an ordinance change on, on the used car dealership two years ago. Two years ago, we requested it.
The Councilman Saab's resolution, you know, it states, it's got a lot of good things under the inspections, but I'm not clear about what kind of inspections or the amount that we charge for the inspection, you know, exactly. I'm all in favor, like I said before. Anybody that's up for a license renewal should be inspected by the ordinance department and the building department, because we want, there was some issue that I brought up, and they found out there was all kinds of violations on there, but.
I love that. I love that about.
There's a, there was actually a, a car rental business on the South End out of a, out of a person's home, and I was informed about it. We talked to the police. The police set up an observation. They witnessed people coming and going with car rentals, bringing cars in, renting them out of the house. The ordinance department came in, and nothing really came of it. There was, I don't know what happened to it, but there are car rental businesses being run out of homes at Dearborn Heights.
Oh, there's car dealerships.
Yeah, I'm sure there is. Yeah, I'm sure there is car dealerships too. But I mean, we gotta come up with an ordinance change.
I agree, I agree. Your music to my ear. Before you go, it's gonna go, sorry, Councilman. We're going to Councilwoman Breyer first, and Councilman Saab then back here. Guys, again, I don't wanna spend 25, 30 minutes on this.
Okay, I do agree it's too long, and the problem I have is it says dealerships. Like Bob said, what of La Fontaine, or even Ford, or Chevrolet? Somebody wants to come in. Don't we want them in our city?
New cars?
Yeah, brand-new cars.
But it doesn't say new cars. It says used or used dealerships. Or we can amend, we can amend it to used.
Dealerships.
Yeah, we can, we can amend that. Councilman, were you willing to amend it to used? There you go. La Fontaine can come around by.
And then what are we charging for inspection?
Inspection fees and everything.
Turn on your mic, please. Turn on your mic.
Inspection fees and everything fall down to the department's fees. But that's something that we would, during the time of this moratorium, that we would work on putting a ordinance in place to enforce it permanently. As for the fees, we don't come up with fees. I just can't sit here charging $2,000 for something. There's a fee schedule that we gotta follow.
You're gonna have a lot of upset business people.
Well, we got a fee schedule that the city has, and that's what they will follow.
And I agree, we have to clean up Van Born in particular, and, but I don't think we need any new car washes anyhow. We have about five in the city now.
This doesn't, by the way, I just wanna make it for the record, this does not affect anybody that has went through it, even if your license is, your permits are expired. This does not affect them. This is moving forward. Somebody that hasn't already been approved, or their plans haven't been approved, and have to go in front of the Planning Commission, and they wanna build a brand-new gas station or a brand-new car wash. If you're already zoned, or you already have permits, or you've already been approved, you're fine. This does not affect anybody. This affects, and you know, you can even put a date to say that this starts, it's an effect on Monday. You can, you know what I'm saying? So that way, nobody feels like they've already been affected by this.
And I still, I agree with Hassan Saab too, that we should have information from the zoning and the planning commissions. They should come before us.
I mean, the minutes used to be sent to us. What happened?
Yeah, the minutes from the Planning Commission used to be sent to us in the past.
I'm sorry. Like with any commission, we do request that they send them to us so that we can have it for the city record and forward it to city council. And if they haven't sent it to us, then we can't forward it to you. And could we at that point have the right of refusal or approval?
No, you gotta, you gotta put an ordinance. This is a.
Council Chair. Before we go, Councilman Saab next, Councilman Ahmad, yourself, and then we're wrapping this up.
One second. I'm willing to drop it down, 12 months to start, but within the 12 months, I'm gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna put in an ordinance. As for the fees or the inspection, that's, that's something the city has. There's a schedule, there's a, you know, there's a scheduling.
Wouldn't that be smart to take that to a study session so we have everything before we approve this all? Because look, from what it looks like here, Councilman, and I know you wanna approve this. Because look, from what it looks like here, Councilman, and I know you want to approve this, and I don't think anybody has an issue with this. Well, hang on real quick. I just want to respond to that. Look, I'm gonna tell you right now, you have my ears. This is melody to my, to almost every single person's ears, but I think what we need to do is be able to iron everything out, so all of us are on the same page. I'd rather start by having the back and forth, have a study session, hear from the public, hear from the council, hear from the administration, hear from everybody, and then you can go forward and just say, because you know, rationally, just to say, I'm gonna put this resolution in, and I want to get this to be voted on. I mean, it's, it's, it's one, it's short notice, two, we don't even have fees adopted here. I think what you should do.
You can adopt fees. The fees are, again, there's a schedule that the city puts.
I understand, but, but you could.
No, you can't.
You definitely could.
No, that's part of your ordinance.
If there's, if you put proper, a proper ordinance on here, yes, you can enforce these.
But we don't have the ordinance, and the ordinance does not take overnight.
But that's, huh?
Let's establish an ordinance.
But you can't establish it overnight, and by.
Let's obtain, let's have a study session.
By not, if, by not putting this, you're waiting another, again, how many ordinances are there still waiting on in the city?
Let's work on it right away.
I'd rather pass this than work on it right away.
Councilor Chair. Councilor Chair.
Councilman Wensel.
Um, Roger was supposed to start working on an ordinance with the, the used car lots. I don't know how far he got with that. Um, that was one thing. Um, I was informed that Goodyear Tire and Auto Nationwide chain wanted to come in and open up a, a store on Beach Daily and Van Born, but they were informed that because of the Van Born corridor and this, that they probably wouldn't be able to open up their Nationwide chain. So we gotta be, look into a cou- couple of things. Um, you know, what happens, what happens if we approve this tonight, and then, and then someone's license expires next week?
The licenses have, existing businesses have nothing to do with this.
But the inspections though, I mean.
But the inspections are currently in place. They chuck on doing questions.
You know I'm all in for inspections.
Yeah, they, but we don't do enough. They don't ask them to clean their lots or properties, and it's not fair for the residents around these businesses.
I'm on board with this. I'm on board with this.
A lot of these cars, you got cars that have been sitting there for years, full of pests and rodents.
I know, but that's, that, that, that's irrelevant. These people are already established, so this or, this moratorium does, does nothing to those businesses.
It does, because once you renew your license, it says it right here. You gotta go through that inspection process and the whole cleanup process.
I like that. I like that.
Councilor Chair. Councilman Wensel just said it. I mean, we had them before, we had resolution, didn't do nothing. Let's take it to a study session ASAP. Let's come up with our ordinance, and let's implement this.
You can't come up with an ordinance overnight, Councilman.
Why not? Let's work on it, let's start working on it.
Pass this, and we'll work on it, and then we'll implement it. It's simple, well, if we can get working on it, it's not overnight.
Now we're gonna just.
Ordinance is, you gotta go through the process.
Well, well, look, I'm gonna tell you right now, this, this, this is a great ordinance. But what I think is important here is, one, you gotta include the administration on what's happening here. Okay, because we could. I, I understand. What I'm saying, we still need to get their input on this. That's first. Hang on, and, and I'm gonna let you speak on it. I'm, I, again, I'm for it. I think every single person here wants to make sure that if you want to renew your license, you have to make sure that you're up to code, and not just on your water bill and your taxes, but, you know, the blight, the, what your, what your building looks like outside of everything. I, I think everybody here has established that. I think everybody here has also established that nobody wants to see any more of these dealerships or, or, or used car lots, used car lots. Because if La Fontaine wants to come here, they're more than welcome. Um, but what I think is important is, you know, we should have proper discussion on this. Uh, hear from the residents, hear from the administration, and, and technically hear from the council. I, I.
Councilor Chair.
Like, to me, I'm put in a position where, Hoss, you have my support on this.
But Councilor Chair, this is on behalf of the residents. You don't live behind one of these establishments.
You keep saying that. You, you understand, you keep saying that. I, believe it or not, I live right behind Target. I understand.
But Target is not a mechanic shop or a collision shop.
I still live behind a business that could actually, believe it or not, if you look behind it, there's a lot of blight. But, so, i- 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 but it wouldn't affect me on this.
But what you're asking is about, I'm sorry, but what you're asking about is that bringing them to code, this is a process in place to get your license renewed or CFO. It's currently in its place. We're just asking for it, and we're pausing it, and putting enforcement on it.
Councilor Chair.
If anything, you're cleaning up the city.
Yeah, go ahead.
We already changed the time. We already changed about new car dealership or, or used car dealership. There's so many stuff, like we're trying, we change already right now, so why we need to do something like halfway? Let's just take it to a study session ASAP. I, I'm, I'm willing to go this week if you want.
I'm gonna take a study session if it's Friday. This Friday.
Do it on Thursday.
Or Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday, you got that thing.
Okay, perfect. Right after the, right after the E-Course meeting, we have a quick study session on it. Let's do it. I mean, yeah, see if the administration is ready, let's do it. Just let's do it right away.
You know what, to be honest, I'd rather take it to a vote. I'm gonna take it to a vote.
I want, I want to just add a few things, Madam Clerk. Um, I want you guys, I, I have to say it, because the council's privileged to it, that there has already been, you know, some type of potential lawsuit that can be brought before this council and before the city if we were to approve this. So why, mind you, I didn't get the email, Council, you were with me. We didn't get the email till five, five-twenty.
I think we're gonna be fine.
Uh, I mean, thinking is one thing. Being realistic is a whole nother thing.
It's, it's just for the record. It was a draft that was submitted as the resolution. The updated copy's been entered in on the record, and it's been clarified.
What, what is wrong? Listen, we're not, I don't know why, what the, what the urgency is.
There is no urgency.
Let's just dot our i's, cros- I think. Council, do you have an issue with it?
No, but I, the issue is just making everything is clear.
But the problem is, if you do it today, or do it Thursday, it makes no difference. You still got it.
Councilor Chair.
I'm not changing nothing on it.
See, you can't be that way.
I said the cu- the month, we said we dropped the months, and you said used dealerships.
I know, I know, but that's all we've even discussed so far, and you're already saying, I don't want to change anything else on it.
No, no, I, i- i- if it's anything, I'm gonna add more to it.
Okay, that's great.
But, again, I can do that in the ordinance.
Councilor Chair.
You can't do the ordinance. You don't, we don't, we don't.
But that's, but that's the problem I'm trying to say, is that we've been working on one ordinance for two years, and it hasn't come nowhere.
Hoss, what is another two days?
It's.
I'm ready to follow, anybody wants to vote. We're going, we're going back and forth, may I? Who, who's in favor just to take it for a study session ASAP by Thursday? Just, or, okay.
I won't be here on Thursday.
Well, next week. After, after the meeting.
I won't be here next week.
Once.
The whole week?
I mean, I want to vote yes on this, but there's a lot of stuff needs to be.
I think it's a very good resolution. All we're saying is, oh, you're inserting things out, hear from the administration, hear from some of the residents, and then you vote on it.
The problem is, is, because I did hear, I did hear, I did hear on, from residents, and this is why I put this in place.
I know, but, but, but did you hear from all residents?
I heard with residents that live right up to these.
Hoss, you keep saying on residents that live right up to them.
I'm not gonna go talk to, uh, sixty-four thousand residents.
No, we're not, but you should at least allow sixty-four thousand residents to have the opportunity to come and speak before we make a vote on it.
Sixty-four thousand residents are not gonna come and speak on it.
Then, then you don't need to speak to sixty-four thousand residents.
Then we'll just take it to a vote, and let's keep bringing it back.
Well, but see, why does it have to be that way?
It's not, just go ahead, we'll take it to a vote.
Councilor Chair, we do have a motion on the table.
We do.
So we'd have to.
Yeah, so I wanted to amend the motion and make it to a twelve-month moratorium and change dealerships to used dealerships.
So we're amending it right now.
Yeah.
The twelve months to, and to adding used dealerships.
Used car dealers.
Used car dealers.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
By the way, I just want to make, regardless of my vote, I want the councilmen and, and for the record to know that I do support this, but based on my vote, maybe different, because I still want to see a study session on this. If it passes, I feel happy. If it doesn't, great, we'll see a study session.
No, if it doesn't pass, I plan on bringing one that's gonna be more fine, with more of it in it.
I'm still gonna put a study session on, in place for it.
I won't be here for it.
Okay, you don't have to.
I just won't be here next week.
So then I'll move it to the following room?
No, but see, you're delaying the process.
I'm not, you're saying you're not gonna be here.
Councilor Chair, you're delaying the, let's have it tomorrow. What's the notice?
Thursday, I told you Thursday, you said no.
I didn't say no.
You just said no to Thursday. You said, no, let's not, let's just.
I'm standing there on Maxwell.
Twenty-four hours, that's, yeah, Thursday.
Thursday.
But you can't, you won't, you would only, you could have a study session, but you can't.
Yeah, a study session, I'm not asking for a vote. And then on the next Tuesday's meeting, it'll be on the agenda.
To be honest with you, I'm, I'm ready to take it for a vote.
Okay.
If it fails, I'll just bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Wensel. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose?
No.
Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Tom Wensel?
Yes.
Robert Conston?
No.
Hassan Saab?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
No.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Moby June?
No.
Hassan?
No.
No.
Motion fails.
Madam Clerk, you schedule a study session for us for as early as Friday for us.
Is it Friday or Thursday? Do you want to do it?
Can you guys not do Friday? So you wanted to do it right after on Thursday, right after Kinesics? I mean, Kinesics thinks thirty, forty minutes. You can have another.
It's six-thirty though, isn't it?
No, it says six. So it's, it'll be done by six-thirty, and then we'll just run right into a study session. Schedule it for Thursday, please.
We just want to make sure the administration is all available.
I mean, they're gonna be here for the commission meeting regardless. Mr. Neem's gonna be here, the mayor's gonna be here.
We need, uh, Rick from the building.
In two days?
We need the ordinance department.
In two days, you want? He's on. I cannot be here.
I mean, there's a sense of urgency.
We have our neighborhood meeting.
I know, but there's also, you know, you also have a, uh, E-Course Creek Commission meeting.
That's Wednesday.
That's Thursday.
That's in the morning.
No, it's at six P.M.
It's one in the morning at, uh, Richard Young.
I know, this is the, so, so Commissioner Kinesics sent us all an email, and we scheduled this year to be here for six. So schedule our, our study session for six-thirty.
Six-thirty, do you want to do it on Tuesday?
No, Tuesday is gonna be a regular meeting, right?
Right, but you can do it at five.
No, we can do it at five. Let's, let's, let's have it, so if we need to iron anything out, we can have that ready for, for, uh, Tuesday to vote on. So we're gonna have a study session on this for Thursday at six-thirty. Please. I'm always gonna kill him.
She's gonna.
Me too.
So six-thirty on Thursday for a study session to discuss this.
Correct. So, so the, so the E-Course Creek Commission meeting is gonna be at six, followed by that, by six-thirty, we'll go to our meeting, we'll do a quick thirty-minute study session. Everybody should be on by seven, seven-fifteen. Are we good with that, George? Counsel, are you guys good with that? Councilwoman Breyer, I'm sorry.
I cannot.
Yeah, I, I would, would say we do it a week from today.
We, we have, we have an E-Course Creek Commission meeting already that day, Councilman.
Give everybody notice, give everybody's notice, everybody here.
Let's check with the administration, make sure everybody can make it. I mean, they're gonna be here. What about the ordinance? What if the ordinance is not here?
Bill Dushum's already here on a Tuesday. I mean, on Thursday, I think it's coming Thursday. I mean, I would, we, I would just ask them. Yeah.
It is.
Thursdays.
Yeah.
Memorial Day is my.
It's okay. We'll, we'll play it out by ear. If anything is, we'll, we'll change it, and I can send an email. But I would like to see it Thursday.
Next up is eleven C, Councilman Saab, resolution for implementation of Narcan vending machines in the community.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman, uh, Saab.
I'm with the Dearborn City Council, adopt the resolution regarding the implementation of the Narcan vending machines in the community, and authorize the clerk to certify the resolutions as I align eleven C.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Uh, discussion on this, I'm going to say, Councilman Saab, uh, I actually wanna talk a little bit about eleven B. Thank you for bringing this up. Um, you know, I think all of us are sharing your frustration. I think we just want to make sure that everything's ironed out properly. Um, secondly, you know, drug abuse is huge in our community and the fact that the councilman is bringing this up, uh, to us, I think this is well overdue. Um, I can tell you, um, not to go into much detail, but, you know, I have a lot of family members that, um, suffer from, you know, illicit drug abuse and, and, you know, I, I thank the councilman for bringing this forward. People that are very close and near, near to my heart, uh, believe it or not. And, and, and to see that, you know, it took us to twenty-twenty-four to actually bring something like this forward. My question to the councilman is, or, or maybe we can connect with the administration on this, where will we be putting these, where can residents, you know, be able to get them? Will it be at the Richard A. Young Center? Will it be outside so that they're accessible? Will it be outside of Canfield on the north end and at Richard A. Young Center on the south end? Will there be two? Will there be six?
Council chair?
Uh, yes.
I think it might be wise to speak to Chief Brogan because they deal with this on a daily basis and they know where the hot spots are.
But we can discuss that, but they can supply us with statistics of what.
They know where the hot spots are because I've heard from them, if they get a couple of overdoses in the same area, they stick around because they know there's gonna be more. Everybody bought from the same dealer.
Okay.
Um, so I think he would be a good resource for this.
Council chair.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, councilman. Did you say you want to hear from Chief Brogan, councilman?
No, is chief on here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's very chief, Chief Brogan, yeah.
You need a twenty-four-seven location in Dearborn.
Nothing, nothing from the audience, please. Go ahead, chief. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think we'd have, we'd have to take a look. Um, we could certainly get, get the guys together and probably work with the police department too and, and come up with a, with a good location. I can't come up with any right off the top of my head, though.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Can you, can you keep the council informed on that, uh, chief?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Your, your camera is also making your face purple or you got some type of reflection.
Yeah, I got a weird light coming in right now. Thanks, chief.
Yeah. Uh, council chair to.
Before, before I let you go, continue. Sorry, councilman. Uh, councilman Ahmad was next and then you. I took your thunder by, thanking you for it.
Thank you, council chair. Uh, yeah, I do agree this is a great resolution and I know we're working on, on this with the county. Any idea like, uh, how many the county would provide us with? And how many machines or?
So from what I, what I found out is that it's based on stats and.
Do they have any stats on your eyes or?
Incidents and, uh, that's what we gotta get from the fire and police. This is an order for us to implement in the city. You gotta put the resolution to get on and then it's based on accounts of how many overdoses, where and what type. And again, they do have to be in a place that's accessible twenty-four hours with light. They are waterproof, so they can't be left outside.
This is all paid by the county, correct?
Uh, the Michigan Department of, uh, Community, Human Services and the county. Dearborn has, um, multiple cities around, Inglewood has a multiple cities around there.
Excellent. Let's take it to a vote, council chair.
Oh, before, before, before I, I, I do that, I wanna hear from some of the council members, but councilman Sob was next and then councilwoman Breyer, then councilman Coniston.
So, yeah, if, you know, a lot of people don't know in the city, we have a lot of overdoses daily in the city. And if this can help out somebody that, a family member that uses drugs, overdoses on Sunday, can have access to have it at home, that it can save a life, even if it's one life, it's, it's worth, it's worth the investment, it's worth the time of it.
All right, councilwoman Breyer.
I didn't really see anything, but.
Can you put your hands up? I'm sorry.
However, um, as long as we're not paying for it.
This is funded by the state and the county. And even if we are paid for it and we save somebody's life.
Yep, but it, it won't fit our budget.
It, it, saving somebody's life is priceless. There's no amount, there's no value to somebody's life.
Councilman, I'm gonna have to agree with councilman Sob on this one. If somebody's going through an overdose, we should governmentally be able to offer some type of resource. Hang on one second, please. Uh, we should be able to offer some type of resource to be able to serve, protect, and offer something to our residents. I mean, you know, God forbid this could be, you know.
Could be anybody.
Anybody. It could be somebody's child, you know, pick up from a mother's shoe or father's shoe. Uh, so I mean, really, if it costs the city a million dollars, I would, I would support this. So I'm gonna have to disagree with you.
Council chair?
Council.
Right now, we're using our fire department on these runs anyways, and it is costing us money in a roundabout way.
Yeah.
You know, so this is an alternative that will give some.
Avenue of thought.
Relief to our fire department. If somebody can just go grab it and take care of it, then we don't need to call our guys.
Using our city resources.
Exactly. Uh, councilman Coniston.
Thank you, council chair. I think we're all saying the same thing, which is to include the fire department, include the experts. And that includes our friend Billy Aiman over at, uh, and the people at Hype Athletics.
That's another good one. Yeah, uh, safe coalition. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please stay at aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up on the agenda is, uh, members of the public. Let's keep it brief because we still have a study session to go over the budget line item by line item. I do want to say, I, I thank the councilman. I think his heart is in the right place. Um, and, and, you know, seeing that, you know, first and foremost, that he's bringing on some type of, uh, resolution to ensure that, one, that the blight is going away, uh, bringing in another thing that's saying slowing down the, you know, automotives. I know the city of Detroit put some type of moratorium, uh, I think it was for like used tires or something. Um, and, and they definitely enforced it. And if you go throughout Detroit, you're not seeing many, uh, used tires anymore. Uh, and then lastly, um, you know, Memorial Day weekend is coming around the corner. Be safe, enjoy yourselves. Uh, if you're heading up north, don't speed, download waves in case. Um, and just enjoy yourselves with your friends and family.
Council chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
Thank you very much. I also would like to wish everybody a safe, uh, Memorial Weekend, but since it's Memorial Day next Monday, if you don't mind, council chair, let's, let's take a moment of silence for all the, to honor the people who lost their life for our country.
If, if, if you don't mind, councilman, if I can interrupt, I have this here. I just want you guys to know it's the fiftieth annual EMS week. May nineteenth and May twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-four is honoring our past, uh, and our future. May nineteenth marks the fiftieth anniversary of our national EMS week, uh, the theme of honoring our past, uh, foregoing our future empowers us to remember that the pioneers who made emergency medical services EMS what it is today and encourage us to face the future of EMS with their same, uh, tenure and drive for excellence. So, you know, I know our Dearborn Heights firefighters, um, most of them are EMS certified. We thank you guys. We thank you for your services. So if you do run into some type of EMS, uh, let them know, thank them, remember that they are also our first responders. Sorry, councilman. Any other council members?
Yes.
Councilman Sob.
I wish everybody, uh, happy Memorial Weekend. Stay safe. That's it.
All right. Any other council members? Hearing none.
Robert wants to speak.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. I didn't hear him.
Uh, everyone have a safe, uh, Memorial Day and remember, uh, our fallen soldiers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members? Councilman Wenzel.
Happy Memorial Day, everyone, and, uh, much respect to all of our on-surface men and women, current and past. And I wish we would, went through it to some moment of silence before we interrupted, but I have, uh, my father and my brother passed away and they're three veterans and I was thinking about them and we began over silence.
Thank you. Thank you, councilman. My heart goes out to your family. Rest in peace.